Almost said, good afternoon. And so when you got off today, I guess. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the committee, the whole meeting of council, community of Jasper, September ninth, twenty twenty five. Like to call the meeting to order is now nine thirty. Like punctuality. All right. Are there any additions to the agenda today? Deletions, modifications? Counselor Waxer.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I'd like to add an in camera item. Under human resources.
So I would like to, so you're going to suggest that we add in camera at number eleven and then make number eleven, number twelve a German. Unless any.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Here we go again. This happened last week. All right. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Yeah. Okay. Before we move forward, I would just like to acknowledge that this land is the traditional territory. Meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route for the Dinesa, Asinawachi, Winawak, Nehioak, Anishinaabe, Supremo, Sonya, Dakota, Mountain, Meti, and Meti. Sorry?
Service Chair, I just wanted to make sure that we actually recorded a vote on the agenda with that addition.
That's coming. I just, we're moving a little quickly there and I wanted to make sure that I was correctly doing my, properly doing my Latin acknowledgement. So having said that, with the amended edition of eleven in camera and moving the adjournment to number twelve on the agenda, may have a motion to accept the agenda for September ninth, twenty twenty five, committee of the whole as amended. Counsel Wilson, all in favor? That's good. Appreciate everybody keeping my toes. So that brings us to agenda item number four, committee of the whole admits. Is there any business arising from this? All right. Number five, we've got five point one here, food security strategy, Jasper Food Alliance. Someone coming to speak to that today?
Can everybody hear me? Good morning, Mayor and Council. My name's Megan LeBlanc. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I've been the chair of the Jasper Food Bank Board of Directors for nearly five years. I'm here today on behalf of the Jasper Food Alliance, a cross-sector collaborative working group focused on improving food security for everyone in our community. Although I'm not personally involved in everything that the JFA does, the Jasper Food Bank is an active member of the Jasper Food Alliance, and we do work closely together on certain projects. Food insecurity in Jasper continues to be a major problem. We see this every week at the food bank as usage numbers continue to rise. I wish I had a solution to this, but it's a very complex problem. It's a problem that requires involvement from many decision makers in our community. We need to be working together through partnerships between the municipality, the business community, and existing organizations working in this space, like the Jasper Food Bank. The Jasper Food Alliance brings these groups together and facilitates conversations and idea sharing. The Jasper Food Alliance has already helped some of these partnerships get started. They've supported initiatives like the Fruit for Youth Program at TGP, the additional garden boxes at Commemoration Park, Glenda Soup for You Program, and the Cooking Circle through the Community Dinner Program. These programs help make healthy food more affordable and accessible, particularly for vulnerable families and seniors. I believe LISA has circulated the twenty twenty six to twenty thirty food security strategy, which lays out practical steps to realize our shared vision, to increase food security in Jasper through partnerships, programming, and research to create a resilient regional food system. Today, I'm here on behalf of the JFA asking for two things. One, that the municipality of Jasper remain an active member of the Jasper Food Alliance Committee. And two, that the community development staff continue to participate as active partners in implementing the twenty twenty six to twenty thirty food security strategy. If we want to be successful in tackling the enormous problem of food insecurity in Jasper, we will need your support and participation. The municipality's role is unique. You bring resources, expertise, and leadership that help convene partners and turn ideas into collaborative action. Your involvement signals that food security is a community priority and ensures that municipal planning and decision-making align with the broader goals of the JFA. When we work together, we create solutions that are stronger, more efficient, and better reflect the needs of Jasper's residents. With council's continued support, we can make real progress toward a future where no one in Jasper struggles to put food on the table. Thank you for your time and for your ongoing commitment to a healthy, connected, and resilient community. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Does anyone in council have any questions or comments? Does anybody administration? Want to say anything? Okay. Counsel Waxer?
I just wanted to say thank you for the excellent presentation, and this is indeed a really critical critical concern in our community, and I very much appreciate the work of the Food Alliance and that. So just to clarify that you would like there to be continued counsel presence on the committee as well as allocating time to in in the community development department to to dedicating dedicating the time to bring people together to have to look at those those issues. So thank you for that, and I I do support those both of those requests. I think they're important, and without the unifying piece of the municipality bringing people together, it's very often very difficult to achieve and and difficult to produce reports like this that highlight the importance of the issue. So thank you.
Thanks Kathleen. And you know, municipality has already been a tremendous support. We lost our location at the food bank, as everybody knows, and the municipality was tremendously helpful in getting us back up and running with the help of the Red Cross. It was a real collaborative effort to get that new trailer in our in our new spot across from the activity center, so you can see how much more we can achieve when we work together and bring real decision makers into the picture. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Counsel Hall. It's good. Even microphones.
Definitely might before that. I just wanted to thank you again for your continued dedication to this need in our community. I was very proud to go in favor. I think it was by twenty twenty three of the position the municipality that has a piece that goes down for security, and I'm very happy with how this all. And again, just thank you so much for your continued work. I know it's not easy.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a little effort. I play a small role, but it's really important, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add that to what the other counselors said. Often, I do have friends that come and visit here and people that I meet in the community that have gone around and understood a little bit more about what we're doing here, and even if other people can take away what we're doing here to their communities after visiting, I think we're all going to be better off, but the collective effort that we see here in Jasper is is something that our community really needs, and I really appreciate all the efforts behind the scenes, and a lot of people don't see the amount of work and time and you know, emotional and spirit spiritual effort that goes behind everything. So thank you. All right. Does, would anybody like to make a motion to receive the Jasper Security Strategy Food Alliance? The Food Alliance Strategy as information. Do we have that required? Okay. All right.
But I'd also like to ask a question of administration. Would it also be prudent or necessary to include a motion that committee recommend council direct administration to include a council place at the Food Alliance table and that consideration be considered in the in the formation of the budget to include time spent on the Food Alliance?
Mr. Chair, Counsel Waxer, so a couple of things, I think you can could refer the request to administration to bring back the recommendation. It may be that this is already possible with existing resources. There may be additional resources required, and we'd like a chance to have a look at that, and council probably benefit from understanding, you know, what level of participation is being requested, and then we could make some, you know, advice on that. That probably would be post-election, and so we could certainly refer that to budget and then administration say, you know, with the existing resources, participation is possible, or additional resources will be required. So maybe I refer the request to to budget or refer the request to administer for administrative support to administration for or back at a future meeting would be the cleanest, and then we could bring it either to budget or to a future to me the whole. There, I think it was explicitly a request for the municipality to maintain its membership, the Food Alliance, I think through the developmental phase. I'm not sure that we have formalized that. This council could do that. Sort of make mess up. I don't know, though, that council can choose to appoint somebody to an external board, an independent organization or a group like this. So it sounds like the group is making that invitation, which is great. I think a part of that would be to actually formally counsel, you know, approve becoming a member of the organization. And I imagine being a member of the organization in the same way as other members, you'd have some rights to participate at the board level. So to suggest motions, one could be the county recommend council approved membership in the Jasper Food Alliance for twenty twenty six. And the request for administrative support be referred to administration for report back. So those two, I handle both parts of that.
Okay, I was going to suggest maybe getting a formal invitation so that it can be brought forward to the first organizational meeting of council, which is most likely going to be October twenty fourth.
Yeah, so again, this is where I think the the council, you know, there is a attached to the document, there's a blank name, is a proud member of the Jasper Food Alliance. It'd be great if it said Municipal Jasper is a proud member, you know, this committee recommending to the next council meeting, and then that council can approve that and give it its membership. And then I think the, you know, the next steps would go from there. I I don't want to speak right now to how your organization determines who's on the board. It may result in the municipality having a position, and you may want to discuss whether that's administrative or council, and I don't know that we would be able to turn that around immediately for the organizational meeting. But again, that first step, formalizing membership would be good.
Sounds good, and not as a stall tactic, but I was hoping that someone would make that motion and not have you write it for them. No offense. Counsel Melvin?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota, and I pulled up the initial, the council appointments to boards and committees, which is on our website. And on the external boards and committees, we do have the Jasper Food Alliance Committee with the appointed counselor being Counselor Waxer and the alternative being Counselor Hall. So I think my request to administration would be, we have this in place. Can we clarify? Have the individuals been attending or able to be invited to the Jasper Food Alliance Committee? This is already in place. So I'd just like some clarification around the conversation that occurred in the last three or four minutes.
Counsel Waxer.
I can clarify that I have attended many of the meetings, however, a couple of them have coincided with other council commitments, but in general, I've I have attended and and found it to be valuable, valuable community connection.
So just to follow up, we don't need to do anything for the organizational committee because it's already there? Well, from my experience around last time, I think that if there's if there's the need to continue with it, then that should be brought forward as well, because we've also had situations where participation hasn't been strong and and then councils change their direction on a few. So if they're, if the desire is there to continue, then you just make sure that we bring that forward to the mayor at the time, because he's the one that ultimately makes the appointments.
It may take a minute to head through. Better try.
Okay.
The committee recommend council direct administration to bring a recommendation on staffing support for the Jasper Food Alliance. Security Alliance.
Mr. Chair, committee can direct administration to bring back research. There's a there's an expenditure required to do that, so it doesn't need to vote to council. That would be the only sort of suggestion I'd offer there.
And the committee direct administration to bring a recommend bring forward a recommendation on staffing support for the Jasper Foods Security Alliance.
So anyone, does everyone understand? Anyone like to speak to that? Should I close on that? Okay. All in favor? Now, opposed, that's carried. Administration. As we haven't had officially received this for information, should that be the next step? Okay, check. Someone like to make that motion? Right, Counsel Hall? All in favor? Now opposed, that's carried. Thank you very much. Thanks, Scott.
Shout out to all people.
Okay. Okay, so before we move on to correspondence, I just wanted to make sure, because we have people in the gallery, we often use this opportunity for someone that wants to speak in general to anything that's on the agenda for today. See someone coming forward? Please, because you're not on camera, say who you are and why you're here and what you'd like to speak to.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mike Moralevich. I'm retired.
Nobody on line.
There you go. My name is Mike Moralevich. I'm retired. I'm here to speak about seven point four penalties and waivers request. I'm just kind of, you know, new at this stuff, but I was shocked at the amount of money owed. And can't believe that it's been going on since twenty twenty. Because I know like with the federal government, if you owe taxes, they come and get them. They seize your account, they close your business. Now, is this a common practice in Jasper to allow businesses not to pay their taxes and to continue to operate? That's one question. I mean, I'm just surprised that you can get a business license with that much money owing, or even with any money owing, because you have to pay your taxes. That's just normal.
I made for a second, Mr. Moralevich. Is this the only item that you're going to speak to?
I have some more to talk about about this.
Right, no, no, I'm talking about, okay, that's fine, because I have to recuse myself for, I have a conflict of interest there, so any part of the conversation I have to be removed. I was going to announce that once we got to seven, but if if there's going to be any discussion on it, just to to make sure that we're optically clean on this one and and people understand my position. Like to, at least if I can, Counsel Hall, sorry to put you on the spot, but someone come and get me after that conversation, I'll come back.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota, and please continue, Mr. Moralevich.
Do you want to respond to the stuff I've already said, or should I just finish what I have to say?
I think if you just want to continue and use your three minutes, say what you like, and then we can.
You know, I am here written. Are there more accounts like this in town? Is it common practice to allow people not to pay their taxes and allow them to operate? And myself personally, I feel that by entering into this request, a grant of any relief will only lead to more of this problem from this and other operators. Because if I knew I didn't have to pay my taxes, well, I wouldn't pay them. Would you? You knew you could not pay your taxes and be, you know, penalty. I mean, there's a penalty, but now if there's relief granted, well, then there's no penalty. That's it.
Well, thank you very much. You definitely were in within your time. I looked at the table for any questions. To administration or to Mr. Moralevich? Counsel Wilson.
Well, for Mr. Moralevich, I'll ask the question of administration, if they can maybe respond to like the proto- protocol of taxes in arrears and, you know, like, but what is the kind of procedures that the municipality provides by in situations like this?
Madam Chair, for Counsel Wilson, so the municipality's abilities are described under our municipal tax penalties by law, which is noted in the report, so council does and has for a long time had a penalty system in place for unpaid taxes where penalties are applied to the amount of standing. There are from time to time a variety of leaseholders, taxpayers who end up in arrears. Administration works to facilitate them coming into good standing, and that often includes the levying of fines or, sorry, penalties on amounts that are in arrears. Council did approve some waivers in twenty twenty five, and that's mentioned in the report. But it's actually the Alberta Municipal Government Act, which provides the authority both for council to consider providing waivers or cancellation of penalties or taxes. So council has a very broad authority to do that. If council considers it equitable to do so, and that's the central question, I think the council is going to be facing under seven point four. But outside of that, the MGA, the Alberta Municipal Government Act, also spells out the administrative steps that need to be taken with respect to, I guess, you know, claiming property or in payment for property taxes, and it's actually quite an involved process in and the taxpayer has some opportunity to essentially make good, and the municipality has quite a limited ability to step in and claim property. The ultimate version is that it moves to essentially a tax sale. The municipality has the ability to do that, to sell a property for and take the proceeds to pay for any unpaid property taxes. That is a multi-year process that requires public notification. So there there is a process for that. The municipality has much more limited ability to to claim that property in place of the property taxes. And it is all governed by the Alberta Municipal Government Act. We don't currently have stand to be corrected. I'll look to the Director of Finance Administration. I don't believe we currently have any limitations on getting a business license. I don't believe that's a current set part of the business license by law to require a business to be in good standing with property taxes. I don't think there's any connection between property taxes and business licenses as it stands today. Again, that could be something that council can change, but under the rules created by the municipality of Jasper and council over the past decades, that is the current requirement.
Thank you very much CEO Given. I do have a question. Excuse me. Twenty twenty is when the struggle started, and you can all know what happened in twenty twenty was COVID. My question is, and council established this one time opportunity for taxpayers to enroll in our pre-approved payment plan and have their penalties waived. Did any other businesses, were any other businesses behind? I don't mention names, but I'm just wondering if there are other businesses that were behind at this time that enrolled and took advantage of this opportunity?
Maybe I'll recognize that we're in the delegation portion, and we will speak to, you know, a lot more details in the in the report. I'll say that there are regularly taxpayers who are not current with their property taxes. So that's it. I would be willing to say that there are few years where there are zero people in arrears, then there are people, you know, years where there are somebody in arrears, and that may be commercial property owners, maybe individual leaseholders on residential side. It does happen time to time, and it's common across municipalities. This is not unique to the municipality of Jasper, and so it is a a situation that there are rules around how it has to be addressed. That's why it's in the Alberta Municipal Government Act. And the approach the municipality has used is is pretty typical. But again, every year, I would say that there's probably somebody that's in arrears. And I know that there were many people who took advantage of the waiver of penalties that council established in recognition of the twenty twenty four wildfire event. So there were a variety of people that were in arrears that took that opportunity to sign up for pre-authorized payment. And so the answer to your question is yes, there were. And also, yes, it is common for there to be leaseholders who are in arrears with the municipality. Administration works with them under the rules established by the municipalities bylaws and the Alberta Municipal Government Act.
Thank you. Look to the table for any other questions? Okay, and to speak to a little bit of what you said, Mr. Moralevich. I mean, from personal experience, understanding how somebody can get behind, we had a business that closed in twenty eighteen and didn't just close and sell. We went out of business. I understand how you can get behind, and I understand how it can accumulate. I think that's why council established this one time opportunity for businesses to pay up their taxes, enroll in the program, and have their penalties waived, and I I again, I can say I understand that. Thank you for, go ahead.
I was a businessman for forty years, so I know all about money and getting behind and getting caught up and paying my bills. Just got to do it.
Thank you very much.
Sometimes it happens. Right? So you know, I wasn't talking about you. All right, so we're at, okay, so we're still, we're still at the delegation part of our agenda. Would anybody else like to come forward to speak to anything else on the agenda?
I would.
I would.
Okay, um, may I ask if this is going to be about seven point four again? It is. Okay, I'm afraid so. So, um, just could feel it out with council, um, I'll, I'll have to step out again if that's the case, but then I'll have to step out again once we get to seven point four. So, um, all right, do you want to speak to some of this stuff that was just, uh, brought to council on? Okay, so I'll, I'll, uh, I'll recuse myself again. Uh, thank you for your patience, everyone.
Um, thank you very much, and if you can state your name and, uh, through your ear, three minutes.
I'm Oliver Andrew. I'm the general manager of the Astoria Hotel. Sorry, Rico, you just sat down, but, uh, I speak on behalf of, uh, my colleagues and my family members, uh, George Andrew and Stepha Andrew. We had a letter that circulated, um, in last week's meeting. I can only assume that most of you have read it, and I'm more than sure that Mr. Morelovich has read it. Um, to touch on, on some of his points, it, it, uh, you know, in, uh, one of my great grandfather's favorite sayings was nothing ventured, nothing gained. So, um, we take the opportunity to ask, then you have the opportunity to answer. So, um, it, I believe it's, it's, um, more pertinent to be on a case-by-case basis. So, uh, I just want to say thanks to Natasha and Bill for, for taking time to speak with myself and George. Um, and after what Bill has said, I understand that it's, it's something that is, is ongoing. However, in the spirit of nothing ventured, nothing gained, I think any business should have the opportunity to ask its municipal council for help in situations where a business might need it. So, um, as you've read in the letter, and, and, uh, you know, I'm more than happy to elaborate on any part of that letter. Um, our, our situation began in twenty twenty, along with probably a majority of other businesses in Jasper for obvious reasons. And as we all know all too well, it's been, uh, sort of ongoing, uh, battle, uphill battle from there. So, um, as you may know, we're a hundred-year-old local family business, which was, uh, born and raised by a, a local Jasperite a hundred years ago. And, uh, we're, we're staying strong, so we'd like to keep it that way, and we'd like to continue to be in business and, uh, operate as a local landmark in Jasper. So that's why we take the opportunity to ask such big questions, like the one we, we did in our letter last week.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Andrew. Look to the table for any, uh, questions.
Counsel Keller, ready? Um, thank you, uh, Counsel Hall. My question is to administration. I can't remember, but in twenty twenty, did we, uh, set up a relief for businesses on penalties during taxes at that time?
Uh, for Counsel Keller, that was before my time with the municipality. Uh, I would look to the Director of Finance Administration, and she may not know off the top of her head. You could certainly look to see if there's a precedent. Um, if there was, it would have been a public decision, uh, that would have been available to all taxpayers at the time. Um, so presumably it would have been available, um, or applied, uh, to this property, um, along with any others. So, well, I don't know any specifics. Council would need to make a decision like that in public. Uh, if council did make a decision like that, it would have been applied, you know, to anybody who qualified or to, if it was application-based, to anybody who applied.
For summary in my brain, I think we did. I think we did something with utilities. I can't remember, but the interest to know what we did at that time, I'm not sure if Counsel Wilson remembers it.
Thank you. Um, I'm just having one of the staff look up at the file to see if we did do any, um, adjustments at that time. Um, so my memory is failing me as well. I don't remember, um, so, um, I believe one thing that occurred was the, um, budget was changed. There was a, um, decrease in the amount that we, uh, taxed for that year. Um, but adjustments to actual let fees themselves, I don't recall, but yes, that definitely we had a change in that budget. Um, so the mill rates would have been adjusted to that new number, new figure that we would have been taxing out for that year. So that would have, yeah, that's probably the only one that I can remember as well, as this being brought up. Yeah, and we, and if, um, we find anything else, we can come back to council.
Any other questions from the council table? Counsel Wilson?
I just, uh, to give, uh, Mr. Andrew the opportunity to, I think, answer the question that we're gonna ask ourselves is like, um, you know, equitability and, and what do you say to other business owners and taxpayers? Um, and how if there were, uh, um, some forgiveness on penalties, you know, how, how is, you know, can you just speak to equitability, um, and to your other, kind of, business colleagues?
Um, yeah, I mean, like I said, it's, I feel like it's a case-by-case basis and, and, um, you know, one of the purposes of the municipality is, is to receive, um, the, the challenges and the inquiries from the business community of Jasper. So I understand that, that, uh, we are coming to you, uh, with a, a bold question, and it kind of opens the door for the business, uh, community of Jasper. But, um, I hope that it alleviates some of the pressure that it's, it's, that's being forced on the businesses now. And, and you know, we do see businesses open and close in Jasper all the time. And the purpose of a, a business is to open it and, and, and experience longevity. And, um, for those of us in the, the business community that are, are experiencing hardships, like the ones that our business is going through, I, I hope that they, um, are able to come up with the, the strategies that, that keep them going. And, and being in a position like we are now, it, it really, uh, forces us into a position to reevaluate our business. And instead of being in a position where we are facing a public sale or a closure, we are, um, you know, rising to the challenge, and, and this step right now where I am is, is one of the steps of those challenges.
Um, thank you for that. Um, I have a question. Excuse me, uh, Mr. Andrew, and, um, I'm glad you're here, because I've sort of been asked, um, when this came up at seven point four. But when the opportunity came in February to enroll in the PAP, um, I, I'm just wondering why that didn't happen?
Um, we, we were strapped. We were, we were in a, a tough spot, um, to be totally honest. And, um, it was, it, it just, uh, wasn't equitable for us at that time. So we, we had to strive forward. We were, um, really anticipating and hoping for a good summer, whi- which it was. And, um, we're seeing an upward sort of, uh, rebound trend in our, in our business now. So that's why we're coming to you with, um, our bartering piece, which is the, um, ability to pay off our, our debts in full immediately if, uh, this is granted to us.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from the council table? Hey, seeing that, um, I thank you for your time, and we can get Deputy Mayor D'Amore back.
Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you. Um, before we, uh, move on to agenda item six, is there anyone else that would like to speak to anything on the agenda? Including item seven point four.
Offhand response.
It seems like it. Okay. Uh, having said that, no one's come forward, uh, I would like to move on to, uh, correspondence. I don't know if we have any to discuss for today. Nothing new? All right. No emergent correspondence? That brings us to, uh, agenda item seven. Again, once we get to seven point four, I'll, uh, have to recuse myself. Um, if the, uh, yeah, if the optics aren't obvious, uh, there are other, uh, reasons and, and one of them are it's just anyway, talk to them together. Uh, new business, seven point one, uh, financial tools to incentivize housing development policy.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. So, um, administration is actually returning to committee. Uh, we were last year, August twenty sixth, represented, uh, a similar policy to council. At the time, committee, uh, recommended some provisions and improvements, um, and sent administration after the drawing board to make those, and we're returning today, uh, with a revised policy. Uh, the report that you'll see is essentially unchanged, uh, from the report that was delivered on the twenty sixth. So the focus will really be on the attached policy. Um, while we have background, the municipality of Jasper successfully applied for and received nine point four million dollars in grant funding from the CMHC through the Housing Accelerator Fund. One of the, you know, the intent of the Housing Accelerator Fund is to find ways to speed up the construction of new residential housing. Um, this is a program that is, uh, in operation across the country. Um, the municipality was asked to develop a housing, uh, action plan, which council reviewed. Um, and in that plan, there were eight different initiatives, which did include an initiative to introduce financial incentives. So it was at, at time is very high level. Um, and so this policy is really an outcome of, uh, our work under the Housing Action Plan, um, and is also, um, connected to our ability to access that nine point four million dollars in grants. Maybe I'll just move to the policy itself, which is a few pages in. Uh, the policy broadly has been refined, uh, to make it conform more to our standard policy template. So just there's some formatting changes, uh, to make it a little bit more consistent. Um, but I think what I would do is bring council's attention to section three, scope. Um, the new version of the policy identifies, um, that under three point one eligible projects may include new construction additions or conversion of existing buildings, provided they result in a net new housing unit. So again, this is, this would be council defining what things are in scope of potential programs that might be developed. Um, if council felt, oh, no, we don't want to do conversion of buildings, we want to only do new construction, you could do so by admitting this section. Uh, but again, the focus is really that, we, under the Housing Accelerator Fund, the objective is to deliver two hundred and forty net new housing units over the next three years. And you can see how this policy links clearly to that delivery of net new housing units. Section, uh, item three point two, um, also addresses something that I think was raised and, and is an often concern in Jasper. Uh, it is specific projects that would receive support under any incentive program must support long-term housing solutions and cannot be used for short-term or vacation rental purposes. So again, that makes it very, council's intention very clear, um, and excludes, uh, those types of developments from being considered for incentives. Under three point three, three point three identifies the range of items that may be considered. I'm stressing may, because again, the adoption of the policy does not commit council to adopting any future program that may result from the policy. Um, but it identifies the range of things that could be considered, and those could include development permit fees, building permit fees, subdivision fees, rezoning fees, lotsite let fees, local improvement let fees, municipal property tax, cons street, public use fees. So that's an area where if council wanted to say, well, no, we wouldn't ever consider waiving X, you could amend that list to remove something. Uh, and again, that would give administration guidance on what types of programs, uh, you would like to consider, uh, and which ones you wouldn't be interested in considering. Um, I'll note that that's a, that's a broad list. It's intentionally broad to give administration as much latitude as possible. Again, recognizing that approval of the policy does not mean approval of any particular program that might arise. Um, section three point five spells out the standard requirements for any policy that administration would propose to council. So basically says this is the structure that any program, uh, would have to follow, and what needs to be described in the program, um, so that, uh, administration, council, and the public can understand. Um, if there was something that council felt was important to be included in the typical program structure or the template, if you want, for a program, you could identify it there. Um, three point six explicitly says that all incentive programs must be approved by council prior to implementation. So before that was a, the previous version of the policy, um, was a little bit ambiguous on this point. Uh, it did say that if a policy or a program required amendment to a municipal bylaw, those would come forward to council. But it didn't say that other programs would come forward to council. So this makes it explicit that any program or incentive would require essentially presentation to council. Council would review it, uh, and then would have a chance to amend, approve, uh, before adopting. Um, and then finally, uh, three point seven creates a requirement for administration to annually report on the outcomes that would pay off arising from the programs. Um, that was let council know about the number of applications received and approved, the total value of incentives that, you know, are applied, uh, and the number and types of new housing units created. Again, if there's something that council felt was important to be reported on annually, this would be a section that you could amend to highlight that. Um, but other than that, uh, I think it's, the policy is actually a bit more concise than the last version that you saw. But it also clearly spells out what's in scope and what's out of scope. Um, and, yeah, so an opportunity to, um, define or amend any of the criteria that you see here. Um, the goal would be for this committee to recommend that council adopt the policy, either as presented or with amendments that you might make today. So that at the final council meeting of this term, council could adopt the policy formally. Um, administration is already busy, uh, working out some outlines of programs that we believe we would like to bring forward to council for consideration. Um, and having this policy in place would enable us to, to move forward with that. So that we can bring forward these types of incentive programs for council's consideration while, um, some Jasper residents are rebuilding, um, uh, you know, in a timely manner so that they can consider where these incentive programs might work for them. I do want to identify though that this is not only tied to properties that are being rebuilt. You know, these incentive programs theoretically at least, uh, would apply across the entire townsite portion of the municipality. So, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, but the policy is here for council's consideration after sort of our, our first go. Um, it's had some revisions. Administration is happy to recommend that, that the committee recommend council approve it as is. But if there's something that council wanted to amend, uh, you could do so today.
Thank you very much, it's CEO Given. Um, it looks like Counsel Keller, ready, has some questions or a question?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, uh, D'Amore, uh, to you to Mr. Given. And just to refresh my memory, the thirty thousand dollar grant, is that part of this grant that is given out? That if somebody wants to build on the garage suite, um, to their house, that is for long-term rental? Is part of this grant as well?
So, uh, thanks very much for the question for Counsel Keller and B. So the thirty thousand dollar grant that the municipality has been providing for the ADU incentive program, uh, is being funded under the Housing Accelerator Fund. Uh, and the policy is not directly tied to being funded only by the Health Housing Accelerator Fund. And the policy is coming after, you know, we've developed a program. So that's a, that's an example of, uh, we had a clear program that existed in other communities, and administration wanted to ensure it was in place so people could take advantage of it as they're doing their rebuilding plans. I think what we would do is we would formal, if council approves this policy, we would formalize that housing is sort of the ADU incentive program to make it consistent with the template that sort of suggested this policy. Um, so it's an example of where we acted, built having a policy in place, council was aware of that, you know, so nothing in toward there. What we're saying is we should start to build some formality around this if we're gonna start to do more of this kind of thing.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, and I probably shouldn't know this, um, but, um, I just want to clear my brain. Um, so this grant, this is a total separate grant from our housing project that we're doing separately, that we're running on those eighty units, farming units. Okay, this is two different programs.
So, again, just to really drive home, the financial tools to incentivize housing policy doesn't talk about where the money would come from. Right? So council has, you may choose at some point in the future to establish a housing incentive program that is a waiver of future revenue. Right? Or you could choose to offset that waiver of revenue using some outside grant, like, so just to be clear there. And any references in here to the Housing Accelerator Fund or the half fund, that's nine point four million dollars. That's nine point four million dollars. Um, none of that has currently, sorry, a small amount has currently been allocated. To support the construction of the J M H C project, that could go two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's subject to council's sort of approval. The nine point four million dollars Housing Accelerator Fund is a flexible source funding. The municipality can choose to incentivize. Um. Or support any type of house strategy of issues. But again, this policy doesn't compel us to only use that. Um. Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, um, Counselor Paul.
Um, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Demora. Um, I do have a question or questions under three point three. Um, outlining what we could potentially um, help with. In this, in the spirit of incentivizing housing, I would think a developer permit, you get that whether you build a single-family home or a multi-family home, I'm not sure. Not sure, like, are developing key permit fees more if you're building? More eighties, or is it the same? For building one thing?
Well, well, Director Sanders is considering that. It may be on a square footage basis of the larger, the the sort of. Area of the development, um, than the fee may, or something like that. Also note that at this time. Development permit fees and building permit fees are actually collected by Parks Canada. And so just to be clear, those aren't currently municipality Jasper fees. Um, that's the type of thing that council could consider, whether you want it in the scope of the policy or not. Those fees at some point in the future may be municipality Jasper fees, and. If council wished to, you could create an incentive program, you know, you could consider it a incentive program that would provide a grant. To a builder or developer or homeowner to offset the cost of those fees to lower the, you know, lower the, all of these goals would be. To reduce the financial costs associated with. Adding net new units to the community. And so what the intent of three point three is, is to identify the broadest range of fees and costs. That are associated with the, with construction, and to say, these are in scope and could be considered. Right? It does not, I just really want to drive that, probably too, already, but this doesn't commit. This counselor and a future counsel to doing anything in these areas. It says, these are the things that can be considered. Or anything to be considered, it needs to come forward to council, and it needs to follow this format, and council will decide whether you want to. A future council actually will decide whether it wants to support any particular program.
Uh, thank you for that. So maybe my question around development permit fees and building permit fees is, and you may not know this, Parks stuff, so but. Uh, is it one fee for a development permit right now with Parks, or is it based on square footage? I, that is a question I don't actually know.
Yeah, but again, since they're not our fees, I, I don't think that can answer that. I don't know, there's a big account with building, paying building permit fees frequently. That might have an opinion, but it, really what it is, is, you know, administration identi, and. These are common fees. So many municipalities include Banff and other municipalities that are not in national parks have similar policies. Um, again, because this is one of the core strategies that is identified under the Housing Accelerator Fund as a recommended approach. And the overall goal of any of these would be to lower the cost of construction. To make it more financially viable, to build something, to build a new housing.
But I, again, if I may, I absolutely support any kind of um, reducing or of fees. For resident building more eighties, I mean, offset levies is a hot topic, and I think that if there's funding to help that. That would be, would be helpful. Subdivision fees and rezoning fees, I'm not sure what those are. Uh, and again, this comes from the half guidelines or that, like that. Is that what this is going to be from? So I just like an explanation of what a subdivision and a rezoning fee and how that would apply to a property owner.
Yeah, um, for Counselor Paul. So again, these are, these are typical fees that you see across municipalities. Um, and so, uh, I'm not sure that subdivision would be used as frequently in Jasper, uh, but in some other municipality. Uh, you may have a larger lot and there's some costs associated with surveying and uh, formalizing the paperwork to make a larger lot into smaller lots. Uh, again, that's not something that happens frequently in Jasper, um, and is totally outside of the municipality's control, but there are costs associated with it. And so I think administration really looked at. What do other municipalities do? What are the costs that somebody wanted to build something faces? And let's put all of those in here, so they're in scope for now. And then take our time to develop programs and recommend them to council. For council's consideration, and then ultimately it would be council deciding, okay, well, actually, do or don't like that program. Or we do or don't like the way that program is proposed to be funded. Um, again, this policy doesn't. To turn, predetermine council's opinion about any of those forgettings.
Thank you, Counselor Paul, CEO Gavin. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Go ahead, Counselor Keller and me.
Thank you, Counselor Demora, to you to the state, and I know it's the program phrase, phrase, the next part, but. If you, when you build that out, will there be some kind of a clause in there? If the developer is getting these fees covered, that they will show how that reduction will go into the cost of the.
Um, so for Counselor Keller and me, uh, I think it's three point five really kind of gets that. Says each incentive program brought forward by administration must include at a minimum the following components, the program's objectives. The eligible eligibility criteria, and application process and timelines, evaluation and approval criteria. Um, and then I think this maybe starts the second bullets there, second column, start to get to the duration in terms of commitment. So if you get money. This says, every program that the, that administration would develop for council's consideration must include. Some specifics around, okay, if we're going to give out money, what does the property owner or builder, what's their commitment? Um, and so the duration in terms of commitment would really get to that. Um, as well as the reporting and compliance requirement. So how do we demonstrate that you use the money for? Um, what you said you're going to support, and how do you demonstrate that you delivered, I mean, in essence, the expected number of units? And you said you're going to, so those are, those would be considered under three point five.
Great, thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna go to Counselor Wastre and Counselor now.
I was ready to make a revision, so I'll let, I'll defer to Counselor Melnick first.
Great. Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Demora, and I have a clarification question on page twenty one. Uh, in the example given. S P S U fees of eight thousand dollars, the one time we bring a fees. Um, look, clarity, what is a S P S U fee?
Uh, for, like, S P S U is street and public space use. S P S U. Um, and you'll see that that's one of the ones that's mentioned within scope. Um, it's the last bullet point under three point three, street and public space use fees.
Thank you for that, and it, following along the questioning of by Counselor Keller and me. Um, we do, this would be a separate standalone program. In addition to the thirty thousand dollar. Um, additional unit program. Would you be able to use both programs or both opportunities? In other words, if you applied for the thirty thousand dollars. In a previous meeting, I asked a question. Could you offset or could you claim the offsite levies? In that thirty thousand dollars, I believe the question was answered yes. But with this additional program, if you choose to do an additional dwelling unit. And if this program gets implemented, you could potentially use aspects of this program. To offset the offset levies. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Uh, for Counselor Melick, yes, uh, I think you are, and, you know, keeping in mind that there's no program being proposed here. Um, one thing that council could do, so that, I think the issue that you're addressing is, uh, the, you know, what's commonly known in the grant world is grant stacking. Can you, can you, can you, you know, take advantage of these five different grants, uh, or are you limited to choosing only the best one? Um, and so, uh, this doesn't, the policy as proposed here doesn't address the concept of stacking. Um, that might, you know, so council could either be explicit and say. Projects may only be considered for a single program, you know, or the, the, you know, um, financial incentives. May not be stacked, uh, stacked. Or you could do the opposite and say, financial incentives may be stacked. You know, uh, applicants may choose, you could choose to do that, or you could remain silent and review that. As the municipality comes forward with specific programs. So, the policy is currently silent on whether that's possible or not, which suggests that there's nothing preventing it. Um, the ADU incentive program, I think what would, what I would like to see us do is if. Once council approves a policy on this, I think I'd like to formalize the ADU incentive program so that it conforms with the policy. Again, we moved quickly to launch that. Because we knew it was a, a pretty straightforward program that would be of a lot of use to people rebuilding, which is what has been great use to a lot of people rebuilding. Um, oh, I think it would be useful to start to finalize it again. Uh, we didn't have a structure or recommended sort of inclusions, um, or format, policy would establish that. And if council wished to explicitly enable stacking of financial incentives or specifically exclude. Um, you could choose to do that in the policy, or you could do it on a case-by-case basis as administration brings forward. Program recommendations.
Thank you, and I appreciate the detailed answer. Um, as it did strike me that as different. Programs are being released, there would be opportunities potentially for people to, I call it cascading, in other words, to keep adding. Um, opportunities, and the only other comment I would make in the, in the final draft of the policy, we'd have a comment where. Um. Under four point one, uh, council is responsible for receiving annual recording on incentive programs. Outcomes and financial allocations. Um, appreciating that, you know, reporting back to council is um, a good thing. I, I would encourage that in the actual formalization of this policy that there's an actual. Appropriate reporting date included. Annual is one thing. If, if it's going to be the calendar year. Then should it be annual reporting within six months? But to receive a part a year later. Of an annual report means that we haven't reviewed it for a full year. So I just, I, I'm, I'm. Looking at our, our reporting to council, and I, I would like to be able to establish a timeline or guideline which is appropriate. Within the, the way the program would work, not meaning that it has to be three months, but within what's reasonable. Thank you, good question.
Uh, go ahead. Yeah, Mr. Chair for Counselor Mount, so, uh, uh, this is exactly where we bring policy forward, so council can establish, you know, your expectations. Um, if council felt that more frequent reporting, uh, was, was called for, then. You could make an amendment to three point seven. So three point seven currently reads administration shall provide an annual report to council on all incentive programs. Establishment of this policy, and then it goes to say what should be included in that report. You could say, uh, administration shall provide quarterly reporting to council on all incentive programs. You could say weekly, I mean, I'm, I'm being a bit silly there with weekly, obviously, but. This is why we're bringing forward, council can establish how frequently you want administration to report, um, and so you could make that amendment to the policy today if you chose.
All right. Counselor Keller and me, go ahead.
I, I would, thank you, Counselor Demora. I really like, uh, Council Melnick, I would like to see more than annual, I think, quarterly would be great. Because sometimes we're behind, so after the year we might get the first, you know, we know that because everything gets delayed and. But it would be nice to know that every three months, we may see that report just like our electric reports. Um, so that I think would be really great. So I'll make that recommendation that we change, um. The, uh, administration shall provide a quarterly and hourly report to council on all incentive programs established under this policy.
I'm looking at getting friendly nods. I was gonna say two times a year, but I, I think, uh, two, if I may as well, um, you know. We're going to be talking about stacking, stacking workloads on administration. Um. Trying to add some levity to it, not heavity to it. One of the questions I have, and I think more specific to Counselor Melnick's, uh, line of questioning is, uh, do you want to see something? Like a specific date or something a little bit more in the area of prior to, um. The next budget presentation kind of thing, is there might be some. Fiscal, uh. Challenges here if we're gonna have reports. Uh, following Counselor Keller MP's, um, suggestion of changing. Item three point seven to provide quarterly reports. That would mean that, you know, at the end of a quarter, before the next quarter comes up, there would be a report.
Good.
Um, and that would, because of the quarterly reporting, I don't know if it would have, um. A, a, an impact on annual budgets, because this is coming out of a incentive program not tied. To our, our, our annual budget, this is tied to the fund. So the reporting is for our benefit, if I'm, if I'm understanding that correctly, and, um. Like I said, because it's coming out of the accelerator fund, um, it's not going to affect annual budgets for the municipality. Okay, um, and the reason I'm asking that is because it does lead up to my next question that I'm gonna have, uh, before we have a motion on the floor. Um, I just wanted, because you did, you did mention looking for specifics, like a specific date, you did mention like. Fiscal year and all the calendar year, I mean, so I. Just there was final reporting beforehand, I was just throwing that out there for a suggestion, because I do have, I do have a question on. The policy itself and, um, responsibilities. So if that, if that's fine with you, then that's fine. I was just asking, because you, you. Um, spoke of a, a specific time, Counselor Keller and me.
I just want to add that, the other reason I think quarterly is good, it keeps it in the eye of the public. So people that, you know, we often hear, oh, I didn't know about that, I didn't know about that, but if it's, we talk about it four times a year. Then we know where the funding actually is, is the funding in use, uh, do we need to promote it more? Um, I, I think it's just good information for the public and for council.
And, um, for clarification though, uh, procedurally, uh, do you need a motion? Uh, or is it just some friendly nod from council to? To move forward with the, changing that to quarterly for the council.
Uh, if you. Yeah, Deputy Mayor Demora, I, I suggest, I suggest, uh, a motion, uh, that formals it. Um, so if Counselor Keller and me was saying that she moves to amend the policy, that change the reporting to quarterly, um. It's probably useful to do that, because then you, there's a difference of opinion on council, whether it should be quarterly or. Annually or whatever, you'd have a chance to clarify that, um, and then. Uh, based on that motion to amend, if there are other motions for then, totally fine, take them in order, and then once. Throw your amended out, then, then there could be a motion to recommend council approve the policy as amended. So, so, short version is, yes, you should really have a, a vote on that question.
Where, uh. Where is the, uh, okay, so, um. You're motioning that. Committee. Recommend. Or meaning direct administration. To change three point seven from annual to quarterly reporting. For the next. Council meeting. I'm trying to get someone to make a motion, not a CEO. So, so.
Yeah, I don't.
So it's clear to administration.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, um, we amend, um. This record in three point seven, um, that administration shall provide a quarterly report to council on all incentive programs. Established under this policy.
Sounds good to me. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. Sorry for being hard bottom today. Um, this could be my last opportunity to chair, so I'll make sure that he's doing right then. Um, all right, does anyone else have any? Um, all right, does anyone else have any questions on this item? Right, I do myself. Um. Mr. Given, if I can, um, three point five. Um, under application process or uh evaluation and approval criteria, all the um. Items under three point three would fall under that before it came forward for uh consideration or approval. Reason I'm going there is that uh when we get to three point seven um on the quarterly reporting potentially. Um. Assuming that all those fees and, and those structures are in place and meet method criteria. Um, on the reporting back. Does the term value of incentives include what potential costs? Um, that might be incurred by the municipality and how those might be recovered through either user fees? Those fees or uh within the um funding itself, should there be? Just looking for wording there to, to cover that in the reporting.
Thanks Deputy Mayor Demoda. So just to, to clarify, so three point three really defines what types of costs. Might be considered by the municipality, and so that's three point three. Um. Three point five says, okay, what, what's the template for a program, what things need to be addressed? Um, and then three point seven is what's the template, what kind of things need to be reported? So uh, I don't know, there's a direct connection, you could amend anything on the list in three point three. And it wouldn't have any sort of knock on effect of three point five. Um, if. Council wanted to, you know, specify, uh, you know, I think the, maybe the under three point seven where it says the total value of incentives allocated or committed. Um, that's, that's a simple reporting of, well, how much? Financial support have we provided? It doesn't say how much has it cost us to provide this financial support? So that might be, that sounds like the issue that you're maybe looking to get to, and, and I guess it's maybe implied, but it's not described well.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's exactly what I was saying, so uh. Value and potential cost outside. Of what's covered by the program.
So Deputy Mayor Demoda.
Value and costs.
Well, are, are you looking to, are you looking to, um. Are you looking to understand the costs to the people who built things? Or the costs to the municipality Jasper?
It's a good question. I think it would be more to the cost of the municipality Jasper, because that, that's where I was kind of going with the, the budget. Timeline and because sometimes when there are incentives. We do, we've gotten into like these little hiccups with uh Parks Canada and uh whether it's. Um, in-ground infrastructure and stuff, and who's responsible for what, sometimes. You know, we've gotten into those areas where uh a cost does. Uh, come and who's responsible for that? Is it the person that's uh or the people that are? Building or, you know, is it the responsibility of the municipality?
Um, Deputy Mayor Demoda, so, so you have the, the costs. To the builder that could be considered under the financial incentives or listed under three point three. So, so it's pretty explicit. These are the only things that we would be willing to consider creating programs for. Anything else that isn't described there is not for consideration. So that, that kind of gets to it. If you're, if you're talking about. How is the municipality paying for these financial incentives? That's actually not described here. Again, the suggestion, I guess, sort of the, the um duplication being that, that it'd be up to administration and expectation that administration would describe. Funding sources for programs. Um, that might be something that you could identify in three point five. Which isn't actually, doesn't, isn't a current bullet there. Um, there's program objectives, eligibility, and so on and so on, but it doesn't say funding source for the program. So that, that could be an addition that would start to get into, okay. We need to regularly identify how the municipality is paying for any particular program. Um, so that, that could be an amendment that would require that to be produced for each program. And then you could say. Uh, you know, in the end, at the sort of quarterly reporting, um, could say that the. Reporting is on the value of incentives allocated on the out, as well as the total cost of incentives to the municipality funding source. So there's, there's a couple of ways that I think might get to what you're looking to, to address. Um. Or on those helpful.
Yeah, good. I, um, it's helpful. I just, I wanted to, to understand more of, of what I was saying was included in the value of the incentives overall, so. Um, you know, I don't want to, to make this more convoluted than it needs to be. Um. I'm okay with how it is. I just wanted to get some more clarification on that, if it was necessary or not. If somebody else on council wants to make a motion to include that, that's fine. I'm okay with where it is. At least today. Okay. Looking further, um, you, Counselor Waxer said that uh we'd like to make a motion.
Yes, I wanted to make the motion in the spirit of this is an important step in moving. Forward on our responsibilities around the half, the half grant. As well as uh moving forward on having more. Uh, increased housing units in the community. Um. I would like to make, therefore make. And I, I also wanted to indicate that I understood that it's possible that mo, that the funding. Likely in the short term would come from the half grant, but may in fact also be proposed to come. From municipal dollars, that it was, it is this grant, this policy isn't um. Isn't specific only to the grant, so I just wanted to acknowledge that I understood that. And that, so then my motion is that committee recommend council. Approve the financial tools policy as amended to incentivize housing and development.
Does anybody want to speak to that at all? Any further clarification needed? Counselor Waxer, would you like to close?
No, just thank you for this work and that I could see it as a very critical step in moving forward on uh on this file.
I agree. All right. I'm gonna call it to question. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Okay. Um. One more. We're gonna do one more and then take a health break? All right. We're ready good with that? We're gonna do seven point two? Okay, so uh that brings us to uh seven point two, the pop-up village artist studio naming. And I'm gonna, okay, I'll pass that over to administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demoda. Just a really quick introduction of this file. And Ayla Tanak is one of our town planners that's assisting today from Edmonton, so. Ayla will present the request for decision and then it will be over to you, over to Ayla.
Thank you. The artist studio in the pop-up village needs a name. We're asking committee to recommend council endorse the name Creative Space Between the Trees. This name was chosen by local artists who were affected by last year's wildfire. The studio is owned by the municipality, so its naming falls under the municipal assets naming policy. Per the policy, administration engaged with local artist community, specifically those who lost studio or gallery space. Or works of art to last year's wildfire. During a workshop last week, those artists explored values to help guide their choice of name. And you can find those values in attachment A of the R F D. The artists then brainstormed names that would represent not only the studio, but them as local Jasper artists. And the circumstances they now find themselves in. The full list of names is in attachment B, and the group came up with a short list of three names to be considered. Creative Space Between the Trees, Phoenix Art Studio, and Art in a Box. While they like all three, the preference is for Creative Space Between the Trees. The group's explanation for this name is. The wildfire destroyed the undergrowth in the forest, but created an openness, a new space between the trees. This openness is temporary, existing only until regrowth happens. The artist studio is the same, a temporary space supporting the artist community through renewal. In artistic terms, open space is negative space that gives shape and meaning to everything around. And I'd like to add that the group really enjoyed coming together during the workshop, especially since two of the artists are still living in other communities. And they are excited to have a space for artists during the recovery period. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the engagement.
Thank you, Ms. Tanaka. Appreciate that. Um, I like it when things come forward that uh happen and are worked through organically with groups and. I much prefer that naming process coming forward and uh the challenge being put on council. So it's nice to see. I appreciate it. Counselors. Do you have any questions or comments from Ms. Tanaka? Okay. Great, well, uh, the report's uh well done and uh well delivered too by yourself, so. Um, I think everybody understands um. The spirit in which this has come forward and the work behind it, so I, I, I really like the process. I think these things are always healthy and um good, and when I was reading through it, uh reminded me of a local Jasper band, uh. No Walker together, but they were called Well Space Trees. And uh. They were quite artistic as well. Okay, so having said that, uh, do I have a motion from council to uh? That, oh, sorry, that committee recommend council endorse the name Creative Space Between the Trees for the Pop-Up Village Artist Studio. Okay, that's Counselor Keller. I agree. Counselor Keller M P. Um, does anybody have anything else to say, common question? All right, I'll call it to question. All in favor? That's carried unanimously. My Counselor Wilson's hand goes up so fast, comes down and never see it. I'm, I'm just gonna assume it was there. Right, that's carried. Um, I think we had a request for a health break, so we'll do that, and uh what time is it now? Ten fifty-three. Uh, I like to take a full ten minutes, so we'll go eleven, uh, eleven oh three. I bet. Thanks. It never happens.
What's wrong with today?
I guess we could have done that.
I reverse the.
Well, it's still eleven oh three, so we always have that full minute to get in before eleven before, so I'd like to bring us back in. We're back from recess and we're moving on to agenda item seven point three. Uh, E D A Regional Economic Recovery and Resiliency Report. Um, so good, okay.
Uh, thanks very much Deputy Mayor Demoda. I'll just make a brief introduction to the report and then Kayla Lebranche, our business liaison with uh. The recovery department is here to present sort of the overview. Um, I'll just identify that uh this report um was self-initiated by the economic developers of Alberta. Uh, they're the provincial body representing economic development professionals. Um, and they've done similar reports for Wood Buffalo and Slave Lake, other uh high river, I believe, as well. Other municipalities that have faced significant disasters. Uh, the approach that they took was regional in nature, um, and they have some uh recommendations. So again, this was initiated by an external party, municipality participated. Uh, and the report is here with a recommendation that committee receive the report for information. Uh, again, we're not asking council to adopt it, so just make that specific. Uh, again, this was not initiated by the municipality and does cover a larger region than just the municipality Jasper. So for those reasons, it's helpful information, but we're not asking council to adopt it, it's to acknowledge that it's been provided. Uh, I'll turn it over to Kaylee.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, thank you Deputy Mayor and Council, so um I won't repeat what uh Mr. Given said, but essentially just hoping that. Um, we can accept this report for information. Um, as you are aware, the E D A um or economic developers of Alberta, they combined um. They did a document review and had a technical assistant team come visit Jasper in May. Um, as well as the remaining regional areas in which the report references. Um, it included engagement with council, businesses, administration, and many other recovery partners. Um, the result is a report offering short, medium, and long-term recommendations to help supplement the recovery efforts. It's not prescriptive, but rather intended as a resource with options that can be adopted, adapted, or set aside just depending on Jasper's needs. Um, while more details are available in the report, one thing I would like to highlight is that many of the recommendations are aligned with work already underlay, underway. By the municipality, Parks Canada, Community Futures, West Yellowhead, and our other economic recovery partners. Both serving to validate efforts and highlight the capabilities of the local work happening to support Jasper's economic recovery. So I, again, just to clarify that, uh, we're not seeking any commitment at this time. Today's recommendation is simply to receive the report for information. This ensures that committee and the community have access to the insights it contains. While leaving flexibility for future conversations about which recommendations may be best suited to Jasper's context and priorities.
Well, good. Thank you very much. Does anyone on council have any questions, comments? Thoughts for clarification? Comments for support? Counselor Waxer.
Uh. Thank you Deputy Mayor Demoda. I just wanted to say that I've, we received a paper copy of this a couple of weeks ago. And I found it interesting reading, it was pretty comprehensive, and I found it interesting taking the regional perspective. So ju, just my comment was that it was interesting reading.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion from council to um. We have a motion from council that committee receives the West Yellowhead Region path forward. Add forward Economic Recovery and Resiliency Report for Information. Counselor Waxer? Anyone comment? Any all in favor? That's carried. Easy, easy. Thank you. That was splitter. Hall asked me if she wants me to just sit here. If you want to, that's fine. I don't, it doesn't matter to me. Um, again, I have to recuse myself before going to seven point four. Uh, just declare a conflict that became your interest. I do have business. Um. Uh, I do have a business relationship with the company in question, so I have to step aside. Just to clarify.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demoda, and I will um look to Z O Given. She was at this R F D.
Thanks very much, uh, Counselor Hall. Um, so administration is here with the report as a follow-up to the letter of request that was received on September second. At that time, uh, committee received a request from the Astoria Hotel requesting full forgiveness of penalties. Uh, committee asked administration to present a report. Um, and this is that report, um, as a result of that request. To be clear, administration's recommendation in this case is that the committee receive this report for information and take no further action. Um, I'll, I'll speak to why we're making that recommendation a little bit later on, but I do want to acknowledge that this is a difficult situation. That's not lost on administration. Um, and we appreciate that it's impactful for the business in question. Um, but uh our recommendation is again, uh, in essence, to not grant the request. Uh, and that's what receiving the report for information and taking no further action would be. So again, I'll just be explicitly clear about that. Um, and also acknowledge that administration understands the, the impact on um the livelihoods of uh the people in the business. Uh, you'll see the report also does contain some alternatives uh which we can speak about. Uh, if council chooses that they might wish to consider some waiver or relaxation of penalties. Um, so as I mentioned. So as I mentioned, during the delegation portion of the agenda, there's some, you know, some question about, you know, what guides this. As I mentioned, it is both the municipal government act and the municipal Jasper's own bylaws. And we have some reference in there that identifies where tax penalties come from. That's under bylaw number forty, the municipal tax penalties bylaw. Which typically states that on December thirty-first of the current year, any taxes remaining unpaid. Shall be subject to penalties. They're typically set at eighteen percent. And that, and that those levied, those penalties are levied on the first day of January of the, of that following year. So that's the typical approach that's existed for a long time and is pretty common across municipalities. On January twenty-first of this year, in recognition of the wildfire event and the impact on taxpayers. Council approved some penalty relief measures that were applicable to all municipal property taxpayers. Council approved reducing the penalty rate from eighteen percent to fifteen percent. And that no penalties on twenty twenty-four arrears would be applied for taxpayers who enrolled in pre-authorized payment program with the municipality prior to February fifteenth. And then, and the taxpayers were also required to pay their arrears by year end this year. Council time also changed the twenty twenty-four penalty posting date to March first from January first. So council did make some actions earlier this year to address the impacts of the wildfire. So without going into sort of the long arc of history on this property. Council understands that there is a system in place for penalties on unpaid taxes. It's governed by both municipal and provincial legislation. And under that provincial legislation, council does actually have quite broad authority to waive or reduce, or forgive, property taxes or penalties. When it considers it equitable to do so. And that's a line direct from the legislation. It is a bit subjective, and I think that's with intention. There may be situations that call for it and you are enabled under legislation to take this action. I think the discussion and debate likely is around whether it is equitable to do so. At the end of twenty twenty-four, the Astoria Hotels property, total property tax arrears were reported at just over four hundred and sixty-three thousand. And with the addition of the twenty twenty-five levy and remaining penalties, the total amount required to bring the encanting to good standing is just over six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. These arrears have, as referenced by the delegation, accumulated over a period of years beginning in twenty twenty. And over that time, there have been payments made towards the account. Typical accounting practice is that payments made are applied first to penalties before being applied to the principal. Discuss it that way. And so the, the property in question has been working with administration, has from time to time been making payments. But they have not been enough to get the property either out of arrears or to pay off the total penalties owing, which end up sort of accumulating over time. Administration's recommendation in this report, again, as I said, is, is essentially to take no action and, and not fulfill the request. And administration believes that we need to provide that advice to council based on the principles of equity and consistency. Council did take some action this year and was deliberate in how you structured a program to provide some waiver of property taxes. To balance compassion, fiscal responsibility. Doing something outside of that and unique to one property owner could create expectations for other property owners or that you would do the same in other cases, small or large. And so administration believes that we need to recommend to you that you should not fulfill this request. That said, as I mentioned, council does have the authority under the municipal government act. And so it's recognized that there may be situations where council may wish to do so. And if council did feel offer, compelled to offer relief as requested, administration has provided some alternatives for you. They really are along a scale. If we want to look at it that way, the, the scale is from zero relief, which is the recommendation in the report. To the full request, which is, if we look at the alternatives, there are sort of three different values there. The full request is reflective of the third option of waiving two hundred and fifty-six thousand for the total penalty amount received since twenty twenty. And that would leave the property owner obligated to provide the remaining four hundred and twenty thousand dollars and change. And any of those options, should council choose one of the options, would, should also include the requirements that the property owner enroll in the municipality's pre-authorized payment plan within fourteen days of the council decision and that they are required to pay the full outstanding tax balance, including the twenty twenty-five taxes by September thirtieth. So administration is suggesting that if council chooses to provide any relief, it should also contain those additional obligations. So and really aimed at ensuring that the full commitment to the municipality is paid by a defined timeline. And that the taxpayer enters into a monthly installment plan that would hopefully prevent this from happening in the future. There was some question about whether the municipality had offered any waiver or of penalties in the past. Director Malinchuk was able to find that. And there were at least two situations in twenty twenty where council deferred payments of taxes and deferred penalties, but I don't believe that they actually waived penalties. So deferral of payment rather than waiver. Oh, sorry, Alex, maybe since Director Malinchuk's been doing the research on that, since the question was asked, I'll turn that over to her rather than messing it up. But so again, administration's recommendation, I think, is quite clear. We're happy to answer any questions. I'll pass it to Director Malinchuk to talk about what we've done in the past. The other thing that I would identify for council and the public is there is a question about. There's the question about the process that is undertaken when a property doesn't pay their property taxes. Again, the municipal government controls what can and can't happen and what's required to happen. The process involves first the preparation of a tax arrears list for municipalities. Prepare and submit a list of properties with arrears exceeding one year to the register and titles office. And there's a defined date by which we have to do that. There is a tax recovery notification. The land titles office then endorses a notification on the title so that that arrears is listed on the property title. Which restricts any changes to the property without municipality's consent. And then the municipality is obligated to provide notice to the taxpayer of a potential public auction. And the municipality is required to set a realtor's bid. And then finally, if the property isn't brought into good standing, then it can proceed after a period of notification to a tax. So there's a process that's there. On top of or before that process, administration regularly works with all types of taxpayers or people who owe the municipality money, whether it's from fees or anything. We do work to try to provide options and alternatives, including payment schedules, to help bring them into compliance. So that's something that the finance administration team does regularly. As a matter of business, to try to, you know, provide some flexibility while staying, still staying within council-approved bylaws and provincial legislation. So where we have some flexibility to try to work out some terms with businesses or properties, we, we do so. So, and that has been the case with this property over the course of the last number of years. So maybe I'll just pass it to Director Malinchuk to answer about the twenty twenty waivers or any sort of variances that were provided.
Thank you. I've been digging to refresh our memories on what happened five years ago. And I'll just read the motions that occurred from the meetings and, and what was discussed. So in twenty twenty, there was a motion, be it resolved that council direct administration to defer applying any penalties on both residential and non-residential property taxes until September first of twenty twenty. And then in twenty twenty-one, there was a motion, be it resolved that council approve waiving penalties on past due property taxes for the period of July sixteenth to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and that was COVID relief. So those are the two that were applied in those two years.
Thank you for that, administration. I look to the table for any questions. Councillor Keller and then I'll go to Councillor Hall soon.
Thank you, Councillor Hall. Thank you to Director Malinchuk. So when we waived those penalties and the taxes were still outstanding, would we have lied those penalties back to that property if they hadn't paid their taxation in full?
I am sorry, can I have that question repeated?
Okay, so we made a motion to waive penalties. And but everybody had to pay their taxes by September twenty twenty or September twenty-one, July sixteen twenty-one during COVID relief. If the property didn't pay the taxes, would penalties have been applied to those properties? Even though we waived them, but they hadn't paid it in full, so will that penalty have gone back on those properties?
Thank you for repeating. Yes, they would have been reinstated in, once the term was completed that we mentioned in the motion. I don't think we got it to the specifics of if you pay or don't pay, what will happen, but the implication would have been that if they hadn't, if they weren't paid at the end of that term, then they would still go back to receiving penalties for the amounts or in arrears.
So for those months arrears that we said that if everybody pays upfront, pay by a certain date, you have no penalties. But if they haven't paid, for that time, there was no penalties, but they had paid penalties for those months or that that would have been waived.
It states that it was waived for the period. Approved waiving penalties on past due properties for the period of July sixteenth to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. So those would have been waived completely during those months.
So then the penalties would start to accumulate after that.
Right.
But they did get tax relief during that time.
Yes, correct.
And is it normal that each municipality charges eighteen percent? Is that something we decide as a municipality or is that handed at possible to municipalities?
It is actually written within the context of our tax penalties by law on the percentage that we apply to outstanding taxes. So it's determined by our council on the amount.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Councillor Waxer?
I just wanted to take the opportunity to acknowledge the courage of the Andrew family to have this debated in public. The mere fact of taking this step is paying a price of lost privacy and possible loss of public confidence. It strikes me that this was, isn't, wasn't, is not an easy way out. Then our job now is to balance our empathy for their situation with the important task of considering equity with other taxpayers. And so that, it is a difficult job, but I did think it was important to acknowledge their courage in stepping forward.
Thank you, Councillor Waxer. I have a question for administration. The penalties and fees we collect on outstanding taxes, where does that money go?
Sorry, may I, may you repeat the question once more? Sorry.
That's okay. The penalties we collect from taxpayers that are in arrears, where does that, where do those penalties go?
Okay, thank you for the question. So the penalties are recognized as revenue within the context of that year. So they go to the general bulk of determining surplus deficit for our year. And then if they're but they would still be set as a, an account receivable or tax, they would still be set within that tax receivable.
Councillor Waxer?
I always, thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to Director Malinchuk. Would is, would there, would in every budget be some anticipated revenue in that? In that category, or would it be a zero and it's a bonus if there is some?
Thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor through to Councillor Waxer. I was also looking for the right terminology. Yes, so the, there is a budgeted amount based on trends that we've seen in the past. So it is accounted for when we go into municipal budget plan for the year. It's not something that, obviously not in every budget line works out, but we do base it off of that trend.
Councillor Keller and me, thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall, through you to Councillor. During twenty twenty, twenty-one, did we have any other properties or businesses come and ask us for tax relief?
Deputy Mayor or Acting Deputy Mayor through to Councillor Keller and me. I am sorry, but I cannot recall that either. I'd have to do more digging as well. I did not see anything when I was going through my files, but that doesn't mean I was looking very quickly.
Councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor Hall. Thank you. And I appreciate the explanation CEO Given had provided. And acknowledging that there are three other options here that option, the middle option has some different verbiage regarding that option where it's at one hundred and thirty-three thousand five twenty-five for penalties less payments received in twenty twenty. And I appreciate that you clarified that there have been payments made. And that the way we normally or the way the municipality applies any payments is it does pay for penalties first before taxes. So there has been an effort by the hotel, by the organization to continue to pay down a balance. Just in a, in a related question, we've had a couple of buildings that are shuttered for a number of years on Conant. And I think in another meeting I asked a question, are we assessing the taxes on those? And are those buildings current with their taxes, even though there's no business operating in them? Or until recently, there was one building that didn't have a business operating in it.
Thank you, Acting Deputy Mayor through to Councillor, sorry, Melnick. Yes, they are assessed and taxed the same as any operating business. They are paying their taxes and paid in full.
Thank you for that. I appreciate the additional information.
If I may continue on that question, they would be assessed based on their revenue or the value of the building?
So with the properties downtown, there are, there's a market rate applied to their properties. When it comes down to the larger scale properties, like the hotels, that they have an income based where they would provide their income and, and it would be based off um, um, where they would provide their income and and it would be based off of that. There, if they, and if those hotels, for example, and even the businesses downtown don't provide those info, that information, there is that base to go off of that allows the assessor to still assess at what would be considered the norm for the other um properties in those areas, if that is um clear.
I think so. So what you're saying basically is, you know, there is one downtown building that's been closed for a number of years, so they'd be paying the same rate of taxes as an operating restaurant at the same size?
Correct.
If I may ask another question, um, back in February of this past year when we um did the one-time waiving of fees in twenty twenty four, um, how many businesses took advantage of that?
Thank you for the question, acting deputy mayor. Um.
We might need a few minutes to dig up that information. My other question then um would be we would we waive fees for twenty twenty four? There would have been fees probably in previous years. With the enrollment on the pre-authorized payment plan, would the outstanding taxes and fees be rolled into that pre-authorized payment, if that makes sense? So say a business has been arrears for a few years, we waived twenty twenty four, but not twenty twenty three or twenty twenty two or um previous years. Would that payment be both taxes and penalties all lumped into one payment plan?
Yes, you're correct. Everything would be enrolled as one to.
I guess I can continue on with the slightly questioning. So if we were to just go back in time to February fifteenth of this past year and the uh Astoria Hotel had taken advantage of that, I I'm curious what their outstanding fees would have been, less twenty twenty fours. I don't know if you're, that makes sense, the question, the question. If we just go back in time and they enrolled in February fifteenth and we did that right now, I'm I'm curious what their arrears would be.
I might need some time for that answer as well.
Um, councillor, I'm just gonna go simpler, councillor Hall. Uh, and this is maybe a question for Director Melnick. So I think the answer to your question might reflect alternative one, uh, which identifies the penalties received in twenty twenty five. So had they signed up by the February fifteenth deadline, then they wouldn't have been subject to twenty twenty five penalties.
Okay.
So that's, that would be the seventy-six thousand seven hundred eighty-seven horse.
Director Melnick?
I have an answer for the other question that we had to defer for a moment. Uh, thirty-six properties took advantage of the incentive program. So four were commercial and thirty-two were residential. Thanks to my staff for digging through that really quickly.
If I may, um, ask another question around those thirty-six properties is, so the um, the program was enrolled by February fifteenth and have taxes paid in full by the end of this year and are on, and are those thirty-six properties on track to have that um complete?
Yes, actually all are on track.
CEO Given.
Thanks very much, um councillor Hall. So it just uh something that was not included in the report and and again, administration appreciates the difficult situation and we want to ensure that we're providing as much transparency and full information as we can for council's consideration. Um, uh, looking back since uh twenty twenty one and appreciating that all taxpayers would have had some waivers of penalties that would have been applied uh to everyone. Up to twenty twenty four, uh, the property in question has paid over three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, uh, has made over three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in payments. Again, uh, you know, that doesn't, did not bring their account current, uh, but they have in fact uh annually been making payments. Uh, the payments just have not been enough to satisfy uh in most cases the current year's taxes um or the penalties that have accumulated and continue to accumulate. So uh just in terms of administration presenting a full picture for council's consideration. Um, and so there's no suggestion that there have been no payments. The the fact is, there have been over three hundred thousand dollars in payments from twenty twenty one uh to twenty twenty four.
Councillor Melnick?
Thank you, uh, acting deputy mayor Hall. Um, thank you to administration for all of the information and and providing us with the background and history and to echo um councillor Axon's comment about um coming public uh as a company um in this request. And appreciating that that this is a situation which could set some precedent um potentially in the community. Um, we did offer earlier this year the opportunity to have businesses um not be charged a penalty if they signed up with the um authorized payment plan a daily part of the year. And one of the options that we have in front of us is the option for the seventy-six thousand seven hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars of penalties to be waived and that the remaining balance should be six hundred thousand dollars and change. And that the waiver um would be subject to the property owner enrolling in the municipality pre-authorized payment plan um within fourteen days and then um make the full outstanding tax balance, including twenty twenty five taxes by twenty, by September thirty. For clarity, um if we were to go for this option, um, the full outstanding tax balance doesn't seem to the dollar amounts don't seem to jive there. In other words, there'd still be penalties outstanding because our policy is to apply any payments to outstanding penalties as opposed to taxes. So as I'm reading this, um, I'd I'd need some clarity that like how could we do the relief of penalties? And also then uh the second point of the and part paying the full outstanding tax balance without having penalties left outstanding.
Councillor Hall, uh, maybe I'll speak to councillor Melnick's question and stand to be corrected by director finance of administration if she chooses. Um, so uh, the amount outstanding for the property um to become current is six hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars. Uh, and so that's the um, that's the recommendate is the alternative one. It's essentially saying, okay, waive the penalties received in twenty twenty five, the seventy-six thousand and change. Um, and the owner is obligated to repay the remaining balance, which would include both property taxes and arrears and penalties. Sorry, property tax arrears and penalties in the total amount of six hundred thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars. And so that, those two add up to the six hundred seventy-six thousand dollars ten. Sorry, six hundred seventy-six ninety-two. So those two numbers is would say that by September thirtieth, um, the property would be in good stead and would be rolled in the pre-authorized payment going forward. So essentially it is um, that first alternative is saying, okay, we'll waive the twenty twenty five, be responsible for everything else. Sorry, the twenty twenty five penalty amount. Essentially turning back the clock, had they registered and met the same obligations of the February fifteenth program. Um, but those two numbers, seventy-six thousand and change and six hundred thousand and change add up to the six hundred and seventy-six thousand and change. That's the total amount of it.
Thank you for that clarity.
Councillor Axon?
Thank you, acting deputy mayor Hall, through you to CEO Given. I if I recall, I heard you say that the people who registered by the fifteenth of February were provided with the opportunity to pay the remaining balance by the end of the of the of the year. Is that correct?
That's.
As opposed to September thirtieth?
That's, that's correct. For people who enrolled February fifteenth, they did have that option.
Mr. Melnick?
Thank you, acting deputy mayor Hall, and thank you again to administration. Um, unless there's other commentary um by individuals or any other comments we made. I would then um make a motion that committee recommend council approve the waiver of penalties received for outstanding property taxes of payment roll zero 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 seven thirty in the amount of seventy-six thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars for the penalties received in twenty twenty five. And that the waiver be subject to the property owner enrolling in the municipal pre-authorized payment plan within fourteen days and paying the full outstanding amount tax balance, including twenty twenty five taxes by September thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you for your motion, councillor Melnick. I I support the motion. I wonder if we, if we're going back in time to February fifteenth, we get the option maybe for business or tax property owners to pay by the end of the year. I would if you'd accept that as a friendly amendment.
I would, thank you.
So the motion would read as it was, with the date being by December twen- December thirty-first, twenty twenty five? Councillor Wilson?
Um, as difficult as it is, uh, um, I've been just challenged with the idea of equity. Um, and I unfortunately don't think I can get behind the motion. I think I'll be voting uh not in favor, but just wondering.
Thank you for that, councillor Wilson. Is there any other um comments or debate on the motion? Councillor Calvert-Appe?
I understand where um councillor Wilson was coming. But, you know, we've had our own government to send off their taxes and not give us a municipality. And we've accepted that, we had no choice. So I know what you're saying that was said in the presidency here, but you know, I'm wondering if this seventy-six thousand, and you know, when I look at two fifty-six, it's one thirty-three. Where I'm kind of supporting this is COVID. COVID really brought businesses down. And, you know, we set the eighteen percent. And during COVID, we we didn't bring that down to a smaller amount, put at it. So during COVID, yeah, there was like some months there were off. But, you know, I mean, it's taken the businesses a long time to come back. I know we have written off some taxes for other businesses um that have gone out of businesses. We've written off some utilities for other, so you know, I'm really considering supporting it because it's within twenty twenty five. The fact that when councillor uh acting deputy mayor Hall asked this morning, they didn't have the money to get into the program in February, now they're coming forward. So we're kind of giving that break that we kind of gave everybody else. We're just moving it up for them. So we're not going back saying we're forgiven, but we're going to give you this choice that we're going to offer the program that we've given to everybody in twenty twenty five. We're going to, because it's not at year end yet. So if they had enrolled in March or February, we wouldn't have got that seventy-six thousand anyway. So we're still within the year. But that's just, I I just feel, you know, we've been presented a lot of things over the years and we have, you know, forgiven some utilities, we have given. Uh, we had another role number, the person down the business, we gave those taxes, it wasn't in this amount. We, you know, our own government has said we're only paying you fifty percent. And as I said, like, you know, that eighteen percent, yeah, we gave some relief, but didn't come down. We didn't even consider that at the time.
Councillor Axon?
Uh, I just wanted to indicate that I will support this motion because I think to a large degree it reflects the same opportunity we gave earlier. And while they did not meet the the uh deadline, it is somewhat equitable. And again, speaking to the the courage that they uh displayed by allowing their situation to be public, I don't see a huge rush of people anxious to have their financial, their personal and business uh details discussed at the council table in this way. Um, so I saw a degree of humility and a degree of willingness to play the game. So and and uh make good on their uh debt. So I will support this. And at the same time, I wanted to also acknowledge the um the uh the community spirit of the Astoria Hotel in supporting many, many community activities uh like uh the Folk Festival and the um and Mount Alberta Uplift Festival. There's been um that maybe in kind, um, they they have contributed um in a positive way to the uh to the spirit of the community. So I, that's all I had to say.
Thank you for that, councillor Axon, and I I too will support this motion. I'm not sure I could have supported any other motion that would have given this business a different opportunity than we gave business this back in February. Um, six hundred thousand dollars is still a lot of money. And I I want, I mean, he's not here anymore, but I think the bravery of the fourth generation Andrew to come forward and give this hotel a fighting chance, I think. I think it's good. I I appreciate your comments, councillor Axon. Councillor Melnick, do you wish to close?
I will. Thank you very much. And with that, uh, in closing, I appreciate the comments of all of the councillors. I appreciate the work that administration has done. I did wanna make one more reference to, I believe councillor, sorry, CEO Given. You referenced three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, give or take. So in the past number of years from twenty-one to twenty-four, significant dollars have been paid into the community by this organization by way of paying down penalties. So um, I'm um I'm glad that there's support for this motion among councillors and uh I would like to try to ensure that we're making efforts to have this business continue to be viable and contributing to our community and our rebuild. And with that, acknowledge that there have been efforts over the last three or four years to make payments, significant payments towards their their penalties and taxes. And with that, I will close. And with that, I will close.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick. Um there is a motion on the uh floor, including an amendment to extend the date to December thirty first, twenty twenty five. I want to make sure that all counsel understands that. And I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed? And that motion is carried. Somebody wants to get Deputy Mayor Donut back?
Does everybody feel? Be still live? Thanks for having me back. Um we're now on, I'm assuming we're on the agenda item seven point five. Okay, uh public participation strategy. So you have it. Okay, we're going to go to Lisa. Ms. Rowe.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Demota and all of counsel. Um I'm pleased to present the draft public participation strategy for your consideration today. The strategy is the result of several years of work to strengthen our municipality's capacity to deliver better, more inclusive public engagement. It builds on the foundation you established in adopting the public participation policy on August fifth and translates the commitments in that policy into measurable actions we can take as an organization. At its core, the strategy recognizes that public input from the diverse community we serve is essential to local decision making. It aims to ensure residents not only have opportunities to be heard, but also understand how their input informs the decisions you make on their behalf. Through this work, we've heard loud and clear that people want meaningful, transparent, and accessible public participation opportunities. During our outreach within community, the draft strategy was visited over one hundred and twenty times on Engage Jasper dot C A N. And we received survey feedback from eleven residents. The feedback is summarized on the page following the R F D. The feedback was generally positive, but also cautious. Many residents see the strategy as a step forward, but also express a desire for strong follow through and accountability. For example, one respondent requested annual reporting on participation activities and how community input was used. This input was directly incorporated into the strategy. Seems like a great idea. We've added objective one D, which is committing administration to report back to council each year. We also heard calls for more accessible and inclusive opportunities, plain language materials, uh multiple ways to participate, not just an online survey, for example. Greater transparency with clear timelines for feedback and decision making. Expanded outreach to underrepresented groups and displaced residents. And a focus on the quality of engagement, not just the number of opportunities available. The proposed strategy responds to these priorities by setting five measurable goals supported by clear actions and indicators to guide our work. The strategy uses plain language itself, which improves readability. It also builds internal capacity to sustain engagement over time and sets us up to track our progress and report back to council and the public. Ultimately, the draft strategy reflects our shared commitment to welcoming input, leveraging community expertise, and creating the conditions for a more connected, inclusive, and informed Jasper. Today, the recommendation from Administration in the report is that Committee recommend Council adopt the strategy as presented so we can begin putting these commitments into action. Thank you. I'll do my best to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Rowe, counselors. Thank you very much for the report. If no one has anything, okay, Counselor Waxer.
Sorry, I think I'm speaking a lot today. Um I, thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota, through you to Ms. Rowe. Uh yesterday, I attended and uh was a participant in the uh event run by the settlement program uh to uh tell explaining to newcomers about the municipal election process and ways that uh new Canadians or um newcomers with even without the right to vote would have the opportunity to still provide input. And uh there were more than twenty participants at that event and which tells me that there is interest in in the community from that sector that is would like that want to be part of it. And so my question is, what um in this strategy, are you looking at taking advantage of of existing systems like the local immigration partnerships and the settlement program to ensure that the those uh and community outreach services to ensure that those at risk of exclusion, at risk of exclusion are included um in in the uh community consultation?
Yeah, thank you for the question through Deputy Mayor Demota to Counselor Waxer. Um that's a priority and we would use a strength-based community development approach to leverage the connections and the relationships we have through things like the newcomer network, uh the newly launched Indigenous Residence Network, the Local Immigration Partnership, Community Conversations. Um other groups we're connected with, like the Gender Sexuality Alliance at the high school. Um the the goal here for sure is to increase awareness of and participation in public participation opportunities with a very specific focus to each groups at risk of exclusion. It's summarized well in Objective One C. And the indicator of success is the number of measurable responses that we receive from a group uh from a respondent who identifies as a member of a group at risk of exclusion. So real deliberate efforts there to measure that and make sure that we're achieving what we set out to achieve.
Thanks for that.
That's very good. And um just from my perspective on that, um you know, where we have inclusion considerations, I think that's the the uh the information that's there is 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 quite standard, I guess. Um probably could include a bit more of that for us, but that's a very good question. I'm appreciative of the effort behind this, though. Um having said that, Counselors, anything else to discuss? Any other comments? Okay. Counselor Melnick. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota, and I appreciate reading through the document, the commitment to additional communication channels and so on, and um assuming that that'll mean newsletters, email lists, posters, just again to try to ensure we we reach out to as many people as possible. I think it was identified in in your um report here that not everyone is connected the same way on the internet and not everyone is on the same social media pattern. So i- i- I think it's really important that we apply every way we can to uh get public participation through a variety of means. And I commend you on that. Are you suggesting infiltrating feeds? Are there any other comments or questions? Would somebody like to make the motion that Committee recommend Council adopt the public participation strategy as presented? Counselor Keller, happy. Great. Any discussion on that? All in favor? No one's cared. How's everybody feeling? Good. All right. Uh that brings us to seven point six. Stay in your seat, folks. Including Ms. Rowe. Um I'm assuming this is going forward to you. Seven point six, Community Development Director's Report.
Yeah. Um Deputy Mayor Demota and all counsel, it's my pleasure to present the Community Development Quarterly Report on behalf of Director Reed, who just couldn't be here today. Um your priorities continue to shape our work. Your commitment to supporting vulnerable residents, along with your focus on diversity and inclusion, have helped us design programs and supports this past quarter that are more responsive to the diverse needs of the people who live, work, and play in Jasper. Um you'll see in our report still a lot of uh updates and comments on the impacts of the fire. Wildfire of twenty twenty four had quite a profound impact on our community and recovery continues to influence a lot of what we do. Staffing remains one of our biggest challenges as many people continue to navigate housing shortages, the cost of living, and the personal impacts of the fire. But we're also seeing encouraging signs of renewal. Participation in programming is usually strong. People want to connect. They are reconnecting, forging new friendships and relationships that are protective for future situations that may come our way. New initiatives are bringing the community together. One example featured in the report is the mural project, The Things That Grew, at the Activity Center funded by the Red Cross, created by artist G Sven He and supported by the Uplift Program. This mural became more than just an art installation. It's a collaborative process that brought people together, a symbol of both recovery and hope. Across the department, there's several highlights I'd like to share. Wildfires, childcare, and out-of-school care have successfully remained open since reopening last September with strong participation and a full summer program. The Fitness and Aquatic Center welcomed over sixteen thousand visits this summer with growing membership and programming for all ages. Outreach and Settlement Services, as well as Recovery Outreach Services, continue to support residents navigating tremendous hardship around housing, food insecurity, immigration challenges, and wildfire recovery. At the same time, delivering accessible, successful community events like the Thrift Event and hosting the award-winning puppet show recently, Emilio's Amelian Chameleons. Community conversations have just started back up, giving residents and organization leaders a chance once again to come together, connect, share perspectives, and come up with creative new collaborations that address the needs of the people we work with and serve. Behind these numbers are personal stories. A newcomer family who decided to stay in Jasper because of the connections they made. A traveling family grateful for our accessible facilities. And residents coming together to create a sense of belonging after a difficult year. While recovery is ongoing, we're moving forward with stronger foundations. And just like the forest, our community will continue to grow back more resilient, more vibrant, and more rooted than ever. Thank you for your continued support and for championing a vision of community where everyone belongs. I'll do my best to answer any questions about the report.
Hey, thank you very much, Ms. Rowe. Counselor Keller MP.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota, through you to Ms. Rowe. Um the daycare, um how many um spots do we, like, how many children are still on the list? And you're saying that you're having problems recruiting. So the reason the children are getting into daycare is because we don't have the staff. That's not my understanding.
Thank you for the question, Counselor or Deputy Mayor Demota, through to Counselor Keller MP. Uh that's a great question, and I'm happy to deliver more detail on that answer once I can receive it. I know that we're, we have ongoing staffing challenges, including at Wildflowers and out-of-school care. Um and that the waitlist for childcare does remain long as it's such a successful and um highly regarded program. But I don't know more detail than that at this time. Thank you.
No, it's Joe Mike.
Um thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Demota, and I um thank you for your report. I just want to express appreciation for having me ice in so early this year. Um quick story, I work in a restaurant and I served a family from Italy who were able to to take advantage of skating in the middle of summer and they've never been on actual ice and they have the whole arena to themselves. Um I I guess the municipality has some equipment they they let them use and the mother didn't have the right size skate, so she went, was able to go up to a local sports store to rent skates. And I think that could be advertised and maybe they they found it themselves. They they dug into, we're in Canada, the Muskegon Arena, and it took them about a day to figure it out and they were able to skate. And it was a really neat story and I um maybe moving forward next summer, I assume that could be something we advertise to um our visitors. Um the stories of gratitude, I think, should be part of these reports all the time because they were. This is great, especially the family with the young um child in a wheelchair. That right there cancels out all the negative feedback we got on the successful changements from the beginning. So thank you very much.
Well, I'm grateful. I'm grateful for you sharing. Anything else from counselors? Counselor Waxer, I want to keep calling by your first names and then I have to check myself.
Uh thank you for that. I too liked the stories of gratitude from the front line um and appreciated that. Um I had a question about the uh a new pos- it looks like a new position in the uh uh Activity Center. It was a new uh the uh Recreation Facilities Assistant Manager. Um so that this new person would be taking on the arena for the months that the arena is open, would they be um responsible for other elements of the uh recreational facilities?
Thank you for the question, uh Deputy Mayor Demota, through to Counselor Waxer. Um my understanding is that it's a new position and then is split between the arena and then there's also additional functions and operations. Okay. P A O Given will speak to it.
I I can add a little bit more. Um just want to provide some clarity. Uh this isn't an addition to the staffing complement of the municipality of Jasper. The opportunity to sort of reframe an existing position was taken when the previous arena manager retired. Um actually, just prior to Wildfire. Um since then, obviously, Administration's been focused on restarting the operation and getting things running and hadn't had the opportunity until now to decide what to do with that vacant position. So essentially, it is um uh reexamining the needs of the facility and rather than having a uh sole uh a position solely focused on the operation and management of the arena um where we have lead hands and other of other people sort of focusing on that as well. Um this provides oversight to that group as well as providing backup coverage to the Recreation Facilities Manager, which is Angela Franklin. So it sort of does that dual duty. Uh we haven't previously had any sort of backup there. Um and we're really excited about the opportunity that this brings uh to reimagine the way we operate those facilities in a more uh integrated manner, uh rather than having one person whose only focus was on the arena.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Counselor Waxer. Right. Any questions, comments? Right. And if someone um moved that Committee receive the Community Development Director's Report for information. Counselor Hall. Any other discussion, questions, just making sure. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much, Ms. Rowe. And Ms. Given. Uh that moves us to seven point seven. Uh the twenty twenty four Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation Annual Shareholder Resolutions. Ms. Given?
Thanks very much, uh Deputy Mayor Demota. Um counsel, uh this is a bit of housekeeping. Counsel, yeah, in February twenty twenty four, adopted Policy B one twenty three, J M H C shareholder policy. And that describes how the municipality act um exercises its rights as the single shareholder for the organization. Uh under that policy, it says that a council must provide a motion to authorize any action as a shareholder. Um and so that's why this report is here. There are a couple of actions that need to be taken by the shareholder of the J M H C. Um and the way for municipal council to do that is by a um a public report like this and then ultimately a motion of counsel uh and then providing that in writing. There were a couple of items uh that the municipal, sorry, the J M H C did hold its A G M for the twenty twenty four year on April fifteenth of this year, but at that time, there were no shareholder resolutions passed at the meeting. So that, and I think this is really reflective of us just really getting used to this entity as we get through the fire and onto regular operating. Um it also is reflective of the fact that there was a change in the J M H C's corporate year end. It also is reflective of the fact that there was a change in the J M H C's corporate year end. When the J M H C was incorporated. It had a April thirtieth year end, I believe. Since incorporation, we've brought that to match the municipality's year end. So it's a calendar year end. So it can be coordinated with our municipal financial audit, the books of the J M H C can be audited at the same time. But that wasn't in place and hadn't, as you know, the municipality's audit wasn't completed. At that point in the year, and so that's another reason why the financials weren't accepted. So there are a couple of motions that are required. From the shareholder under the Business Corporations Act. That's the election of directors. The dispensing with auditors until the next annual general meeting and the appointment of accountants. And so those are in the attached annual resolutions in writing document. And so in essence, we are asking committee to recommend. That council approve the twenty twenty four annual shareholder resolutions for the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation as presented. Again, this is a bit of a requirement and housekeeping, but it is to ensure that the municipality is exercising its rights. As the shareholder for the corporation in a clear, consistent and transparent manner. Happy to answer any questions.
Councillors, the C E O said he's happy to answer any questions. Do you have any questions? I don't either. I sit on the committee with councillor Wilson and. I understand everything. So. Councillor Wilson, I would make the motion that committee recommend council approve the twenty twenty four annual shareholder resolutions for the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation as presented. Beautiful. Anyone comment? All right, all in favor? Thank you very much. That moves us to the motion action list. Ms. Given, do you have something to go through with this?
Yeah, just very briefly, if you go to the second page, those are the only items that were. Committed to being before the municipal election, the financial incentives to, sorry, the financial tools incentivize housing.
Awesome.
Was delivered today, that could be taken off the list. The provincial rail master plan, there was a question about a joint letter. I can report that administration is working with Tourism Jasper and the J P Chamber of Commerce. To draft that letter so we can take that one off. The O C F file letter of support has been provided and the Astoria Hotel Correspondence item came to the agenda today. So. Administration would recommend that those four items that had timelines before the municipal election could be removed. And all of the other items will follow after the October municipal election.
Thank you for the update. Councillor Melnick. I'd be prepared to make the motion to, I I believe would be to accept. Approve the updated motion action list as presented based on C E O Given's comments of the four items to be removed. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor? Unless you have any comments. Okay, councillor. That's carried, you know, honestly. So. Prior to adjournments, oh, we have upcoming events, so sorry. That being completed, agenda item number nine, nine point one, council appointments to boards and committees, any reports? Okay. Councillor Waxer.
I attended the adult community conversation last week and it was very well attended and. Lots of robust conversations and.
Great, thank you very much. Councillor Hall.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor. I attended the seniors community conversation last Wednesday. Yesterday councillor Melnick, myself and councillor Waxer attended the recovery advisory committee meeting and I had a library work meeting last night. And the blinds are installed in the library. Please go take a look. They're very happy.
Councillor Yarobi.
I should report on my Evergreen portfolio, just to let you know that. The Alberta Government Senior Housing will be bringing in housing into Hinton, the Pine Valley in Lurgaria. We have twenty two units and our Pine Grove residents that are situated in Edson will be able to move there. And our residents that are situated in Hinton may also have the opportunity to move down with their other. Other residents of Pine Grove. And once they're all built and if there's any left over, they'll be available to Jasper senior residents. That are living in Hinton and that might be the case. And this will all come into effect around the end of September. Thank you to the Alberta government for supporting this.
Great news and grateful for the. Support from our provincial leaders. Anybody else have any reports? Okay, councillor Waxer.
One quick, just that I attended the Jasper Folk Festival on the weekend. And just to express appreciation to the organizers for a job very well done. It was such a. Wonderful feeling of community gathering and it was lovely to see people of all ages enjoying the. The event. So again, thank you to the people who put so much effort into creating that event.
I agree. Thank you very much. And I think it gave a little blast to the economy as I saw quite a few people from out of town visiting. Out and about. So congratulations hopefully for another successful event and I look forward to next year's. Okay. That moves us to agenda item number ten, upcoming events. The last meeting of current council next week, Tuesday, September sixteenth. It's been a pleasure working with you guys, really. Nomination day, Monday, September twenty second, I. Strongly encourage people in the community that are interested to step forward and. And put your names in. So it's quite an opportunity if you get to serve. On September thirtieth, Tuesday, we have National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. And then the next item, all candidates forum, Tuesday, October seventh at six thirty P M to eight thirty P M. We've got the advance vote on Wednesday, October fifteenth and municipal election day, Monday, October twentieth. Does anybody have anything to add to upcoming events? All right. Well, that brings us to agenda item number eleven. Will there be some business afterwards to go through after in camera?
Yes, there will be a motion after our encounter. However, it will appear in the minutes, but not, we won't resume. Our Zoom call.
All right, so stay tuned for the minutes following this. So that won't require anybody to stay online or come back to to view us unless. Well, no, yes, even if you're watching and recording, it won't be there. So we have a motion to go in camera at twelve nineteen. Thank you.